Good evening and welcome to Chatham Select Board meeting of January 19, 2021. This is remote participation only. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30a, section 18, and the governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So, tonight, we're going to take a roll call and declare a quorum, and then I will ask for a motion to go into executive session. We will be returning to regular meeting directly thereafter. So, let's get, I just want to make a note that select board member Dinkins is, will be late this evening, so I'll just go through the rest of the roll. Peter Kokolos?
Present.
Corey Metters?
Present.
Dean Nacastro? Dean? You might be muted, Dean.
It looks like he's frozen.
Okay. He is frozen. Okay. The chair is present. I can, I can declare a quorum, and we can accept a motion to go into executive session with a return to open session later on. Anybody want to make that motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Peter? I move that we move into executive session according to Mass General Law, chapter 39, section 238, number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, with return to open session, Mass Coalition, well, do I need to read the last part? I guess so.
Yes.
Mass, Peace Officers, MCOPN, Local Number 294, Chatham Sergeant and Patrolman Union.
Okay. Do you have a second? Yes. You're on the phone?
Yeah, it's Shereen, it's Dean. I, my screen froze and I'm on the phone right now, so.
Okay. All right, well, we did, we did have a quorum. You did freeze during your vote. We're now in the middle of asking for a second to go into executive session, and Corey has just seconded. So, right now, we're going to take a roll call to, a vote to go into executive session.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Select Board Member Kokolos?
Aye.
Board Member Metters?
Aye.
Board Member Nacastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, folks, we're going to go into executive session. We'll be back directly after our business is taken care of, so you may hang out in the room or check back in a little while. Oh, look. Hey, Jeff, we just, we just voted to go into executive session, so if you want to go ahead and just click out, and we'll meet you all back in the other meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Bye.
Welcome. Hello. Again, we're back from, we returned back to open session from our executive session. And before we get started, I want to take a poll of the select board's attendance to declare that we have a quorum. So we're going to take a roll again, guys. Peter?
Present.
Jeff?
Present.
Corey?
Present.
Dean?
Present.
And Chair is present. Okay. All right. So our first order of business tonight as we move into our regular business, regular meeting is public announcements and agenda item requests. This is where participants may make a general non-deliberative announcement or request for an agenda item. I'm going to go first. I just want to make an announcement. I just want to pull this up. So the town was informed that on January 13th, 2021, the Governor Baker signed Special Act, House 5234 into law officially amending the town's Home Rule Charter to change the name of the town's chief executive authority from the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. August 18th, 2020 was the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment and the Select, the Chatham Board of Selectmen voted unanimously at that time to change the name to Select Board. Special legislation petition, petition to the Mass Legislative General Court to amend the Chatham's Home Rule Charter was filed by State Rep. Peak on September 24th, 2020, and was supported by Senator Sears. The process to change the Board of Selectmen to Select Board began with a citizen's petition article filed by former Select Board member, Dr. Florence Selden and community member Debbie Aikman. The, the act was filed to consider a resolution at our annual town meeting on May 13th, 2019. And this resolution passed with more than a two-thirds majority required vote. It's a fitting symbol that this was, this action was taken on the 100th anniversary of a woman's right to vote. And I want to thank Select Board Member Florence Selden and Debbie Aikman for their work on behalf of the significant name change, as well as our legislative delegation. Okay. So that's my announcement. Is there any board members that have any public announcements or agenda item requests? Okay. So at this time, I'm going to ask if there's any remote participants who would have a public announcement or agenda item request, you can raise your team's app hand, or you may create, or you may call out and I'll create a list. Okay, I see Carol Gordon has her hand raised. Carol, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Shereen. After the last Airport Commission meeting, a lot of, I think a lot of the public's questions went unanswered. So I'd like to suggest another joint meeting with the Airport Commission and the Select Board, with the public asking questions and the Airport Commission respectfully answering. The Select Board, I feel, could act maybe as a monitor, preventing the improper behavior demonstrated towards the public at the last Airport Commission meeting. And I was hoping maybe we could put that on the agenda and try to work this out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public announcements? Agenda item requests? Okay, I don't see any. So we're going to move forward tonight. And I want to review our meeting. We're first going to hear new business from Dr. Dunkinson, from Jill, and from our Finance Director, Alex Halela. After that, you may ask questions after each of the updates. And then we'll move to public comments. And public comments can be made on any of our business agenda items. And your time is limited to five minutes. And I respect, I ask that you respect our time. We've had some issues with people going over the timeframe on public comments and had other community members email us and address the issue. And so we want everybody to be respectful of time. The business agenda items that you may speak to in public comments are the Town Manager's Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Summary and Budget Recommendations transmitted July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. And then we're going to get a project update by the project team for the former Eldridge Garage property at 365 and 0 Main Street. After that is finished, we again will ask for public comments and then final thoughts from the board. So let's move forward with our new business, the coronavirus COVID-19 update from the Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Robert Dunkinson. Dr. Bob, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you all hear me well?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so just quickly, I'm running through some numbers as we usually do. I'll start with the current status in the Commonwealth. As of this afternoon's update, the Commonwealth had 476,000-plus cases and over 13,700 deaths. In Barnstable County, we had 7,499 cases, and that was an increase of 87 cases since yesterday. In terms of deaths in Barnstable County, we had 303 deaths, and that's an increase of one from the previous day. In Chatham, as of today, we have 163 cases and three deaths of Chatham residents that we are aware of. And that's since January 1st of 2020, considering the pandemic began really in March of 2020. So far in January of this year, we have 55 cases. And if you let me share my screen, I will show you the current. Can everybody see the monthly figure here? The black and gray is 2020, the red and magenta is 2021. So through today, we have almost as many cases in January as we had in December of last year, which was our highest month to date. And considering today is only the 19th of January, and we still have 11 days to go in the month, clearly, January of this year will be our highest month to date. We did have a fair number of cases resolve this month as well. And that's because of the high caseload in December. Many of those cases appearing towards the end of December, so they are counted as resolved in January when they finish their quarantine or their isolation period. So that figure just gives you an idea of where we are and the fact that we are still in that post Thanksgiving, post Christmas, post New Year surge that we're seeing all across the country, as well as in Massachusetts and locally here on Cape Cod. Just a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. There's also been a significant shift in the demographic of cases in Chatham. And as you can see from this figure, currently, those 80 years old and older account for over 30% of the cases in Chatham. And that is a significant shift from what we saw pretty well all the way up through the middle of December, where that 80-year-old and higher demographic was, quite honestly, relatively low compared to some of the other demographics. Previously, we talked about the 39-year-old and younger group as being the largest majority of the cases. But that has shifted significantly over the last two weeks. Since January 1st of last year, cases in local long-term care facilities accounted for about 35% of cases in total. So we had roughly 57 cases out of a total of 163. However, since January 1st of this year, cases in our local long-term care facility are now accounting for roughly 67% of our cases. So 37 out of 55. And that is a significant shift in what we've had and what the folks at the local arm temp care facility have been dealing with. You know, it's really somewhat unfortunate. They did an absolutely phenomenal job for the first eight or nine months of this pandemic, keeping COVID-19 at bay and really protecting their residents, and unfortunately, and through no fault of their own. But it just highlights how insidious this virus is. And as I said last week, the CDC confirmed about 55% or higher of transmission was from asymptomatic individuals. And it just goes to show that even facilities that are taking the best of precautions are still susceptible to this virus at fairly high levels. And then just quickly, a couple of other things that I wanted to touch on. We are still, in terms of the vaccine, we are still in Phase 1, Priority Groups 1 through 4, which are primarily those targeted at healthcare workers and others in terms of congregate living facilities and whatnot. We expect that the next group, which will be the home health industry, will be starting probably the 1st of February, maybe a little bit earlier. But it's not definitive yet. And just to give you an idea, so far here in Barnstable County, the clinics that have been set up by the county, as of today, had vaccinated approximately 100, 100, pardon, 700 members of our first responder community. And that's continuing. We have some of those that were getting their second shots today, which is great news. Other than that, I don't have a lot of information for you on the vaccine front. It has changed. We did put a couple of new graphics up on the town's website this morning, as well as Channel 18. It just highlights some more information that the state is putting out regarding vaccines and the priority groups, as well as what the state called "need-to-know" information about the vaccine, which is basically a series of, of questions about the vaccine. It's effectiveness and whatnot, with answers provided by the state. So I would urge anyone that hasn't seen that to go to our website. It is up there. It is running on Channel 18 as well, and that has some really good information. One other thing, Barnstable County, starting officially today, but they started it earlier yesterday, now has a helpline available. Staff from 8 till 4:30 each day, Monday through Friday, with members of the Medical Reserve Corps, who are available to help folks answer questions, provide information to people regarding COVID-19 and the vaccine. And the number for that helpline is 774-330-3001. Again, that's 774-330-3001. And if you didn't quite get that number, it is up on our website. We do have the county's press release up there that has the number, as well as the type of information that's available. And I could tell you that as of approximately 2 o'clock this afternoon, when we had our health agents call, that county line had already fielded over 800 calls from Cape Cod residents. And again, they can provide information on COVID. They can provide information on vaccine, what priority groups, where to go, when it's going to be available. But just, you know, it's important for people to realize, we still are only in Phase 1 of the vaccine rollout, which is really limited to first responders and those in COVID-facing healthcare situations. And then finally, the last thing I wanted to mention, the Board of Health is having a special meeting tomorrow at 2 o'clock, virtual meeting like yours, where they're going to be considering a change to their current Board of Health emergency order regarding notification and closures of business. Right now, that order only applies to the restaurant industry. However, because of the recent situation regarding the post office, as well as some other businesses that the public has access to, the Board of Health asked staff to draft up a revision to that, which they will be reviewing tomorrow. And basically, the requirements for public notification, closing of an establishment, and cleaning would basically be extended to pretty much any business or entity that's open to the public. So that, again, is going to be on their agenda tomorrow at 2 o'clock, if anyone is interested. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Bob, I see that Chief, Fire Chief Pasquale has his hand up. I didn't know if he had something to add or had a question relevant. So Chief, Dave?
Yeah. Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that we received the second dose of our vaccine today, and I just want to say how proud I am of the members of the Chatham Fire Department. They, we have a 93% compliance rate. Nationwide, it's running around 60%. So I just want to tip my hat to them. There was total buy-in in our department, and I'm really proud of the men and women of our department. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Board Member Nick Castro has a question for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Shereen. I applaud what the chief just said about his members. Bob, with respect to the Board of Health and the post office, I, I believe there've been consultation with, there's been consultation with town council. Does the town have authority to tell the post office what to do? Has that been determined?
Yes. I had a conversation with town council. We are going to have town council on the call as well during the Board of Health meeting tomorrow. And the information that town council provided to me, the local municipality has limited jurisdiction over the post office and their facilities. And he suggested maybe kind of a voluntary compliance as opposed to mandating something or fining them if they are found to be in violation going forward. But town council is going to be on the call tomorrow to expand on that and address it as necessary.
Good. Thank you. And I just want to make a comment about the vaccination rollout. And I, this is beyond any, anyone here in Chatham. And I saw an email today from Senator Seer expressing frustration. I think that I'm very disappointed in how the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has rolled out this vaccine, when you compare it to some other states. Particularly with respect to people over 65, because they have been placed, I believe, in the lowest priority in Phase 2. I could be corrected if that's not correct. Is that wrong? Is that wrong, Bob?
No, that is correct. They are in the, the last priority in Phase 2.
Yeah. And if you look at your chart that you showed earlier, it's the, the contagion is, is spreading significantly among older people. And I just don't understand it. If I'm in Texas, or I'm in Florida, and I'm 65 or older, I can get a shot, but I can't in Massachusetts. And we'll see how things are going forward. I understand and fully support vaccinating the medical professionals and the first responders upfront. That's really important. But I don't think they've done a great job in the rollout of the vaccine. So I'll just leave it at that. It's just a comment as from one public official. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Any other questions from the board members? Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Bob. Just a quick question on the, the five regional or five locations on the Cape that I've heard about. Any, any further information on where they might be located? I understand Gillette started today or yesterday or whatever, and there was another site in Attleboro cited, but what about the Cape?
Yeah. So far, the information we have is the state of Massachusetts is not going to be opening a mass vaccination site on the Cape like they did at Gillette Stadium. The county, we are currently working with the county. The county is looking at multiple sites, continuing one at the Orleans DPW. They're also looking at continuing Barnstable County Fairgrounds, possibly the Melody Tent, possibly Four Seas. And they've also approached Superintendent Calstrum at the Cape Cod National Seashore about potentially hosting a site up in that area somewhere. You know, as you can imagine, it's an area, you need a location with a lot of space for queuing cars and things like that. At this time of the year, they're, they're really trying to look at sites where it could be done inside, because obviously, the weather's an issue. But based on our call today, I expect we'll probably start hearing about Cape-specific sites either towards the end of next week or the beginning of the week after. You know, part of the issue is there just isn't a lot of vaccine available in Massachusetts. That's one of the reasons why they haven't, you know, really rolled out a lot of information yet on large-scale testing sites. Remember, Gillette even now is still limited to first responders and, and people that are in the priority groups that have already been getting vaccine. So they haven't opened, nothing's been opened to the public as of yet.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any remote participants have any questions? Just call out your name if you're not, you do not have the team's app. Okay. I see EG. Go ahead, EG.
Yes. Thank you, Elaine Gibbs. I would like to concur with Dean Castro on this. Governor Baker held a press conference on Friday, and he reported that in Phase 1, there are 60, 760,000 people in Phase 1 to be vaccinated. And he pointed out that that means 1.3 million, because they each need two shots. As of today, only 239,000 people have been vaccinated in Massachusetts, and the total amount that we've had delivered to us are only 347,000 doses. So that leaves 900,000 people in Phase 1, 900,000 vaccinations that have to be given in Phase 1 before we can even go to Phase 2. And these are his words, not mine. What's disturbing is we only have, we've had 347,000 for at least two weeks. Virginia has gotten 852,000. Georgia has gotten a million. Florida's gotten 2 million. California's gotten 3.5. New Jersey, 658,000. North Carolina has gotten a million. And for some reason, Governor Baker hasn't gotten enough doses here. So I am really concerned that the 65-plus, we're not talking February. February is, you know, two weeks away, and we're only inoculating people at about 12,000 a day. So even if we continue that, that's only another 140,000. We'll still have 900,000 to go. I called that Barnstable County number, and the lady was very nice. She pressed number 3. But the bottom line is, they don't know anything. I had asked, you know, what the sites would be here, how we would be notified if our personal physicians would say, okay, you are age 70 with two comorbidities. Here's your permission slip to get an appointment. She said she had no idea how that was going to work. I call my doctor. They're not even taking lists. I said, can you put me on the list when you find out something? She said, we're not taking lists. So there's 6.8 million people in Massachusetts. That's 12, that's 13.6 million doses we need to vaccinate everyone, and we only have 347,000. So I think we're, I, I think we have to be more realistic with the public. I think, you know, our elderly population here thinks they're going to get vaccinated within the next month or two. I don't see that happening unless the state and Governor Baker does something pretty drastic to ramp this up. And to say that we don't even have sites even identified where we can even go and get them, if and when it comes here, I, I think, I think it's really, really unfortunate. And Baker has some explaining to do, because other states are doing, I, my, I, I know people that are going to Florida and Connecticut, and...
Okay. Elaine? I, I think one of the things that a lot of the community members can do is if, if they're feeling this, I, I mean, we, we're hearing it. We're, we're relaying this along as well as we can. Call, call Senator Seer's office. Call the governor's office. You know, put pressure as much as you can on the powers that be that are holding, you know, holding us sort of in this hiatus, and take that kind of action as well. I think it would be really helpful in the process. Jeff, you had your hand up.
Excuse me. I would just say that the Board of Health carries a lot more weight in the Health Division than any one of us. I think we found that out, that individual citizens do not have a lot of, carry a lot of weight. So I would hope that, as Chatham does, express their dismay at how this is being rolled out. Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have the opportunity, starting tomorrow, to have 100 million in 100 days, so let's see how we do. Maybe, maybe Massachusetts might get a little downstream vaccine out of it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for Dr. Dunkinson? Okay. I'm not hearing any. If everybody could just mute their mics, so we're getting a little background giggling going on. Okay. Let's see. I think, thank you, Dr. Dunkinson.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I think the next is either Alex or Jill. I'm not sure which is going next. Jill?
I can go quickly, Madam Chair. So we did not have a Town Manager's Community Update last week, but we're working on one for this week. And we'll have all this information and any new information that comes out of the Board of Health meeting. And the, right now, we still are closed to public access. We're going to review that. These are the town offices that are open for business but closed to public access still, and we're going to review that at the end of this week. And we'll let the board know next week if there's a resumption of the opening by appointment only. And with us tonight is Alex, who, our Finance Director, who is scheduled quarterly, but it's almost every other meeting to provide just an update on town finances. I know she's here, and if you want to go to her, and that would be great. And that's it for my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. And then we'll ask questions of either of you after. Go ahead, Alex. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I've been asked to give the board's updates on the COVID costs, as well as revenues during the pandemic. So just to go through, as of December 31st, 2020, the town has expended $797,902 in COVID-related costs. We have received $297,488 in CARES money back, and we've reclassified some of those expenses, just over $23,000 back to the general fund, as it would not qualify for reimbursement either under COVID or CARES. We still do have money due from the CARES Act of $245,625. And the deadline for filing that reimbursement request has been extended to March 5th. So that's good. Good to know that. And also, the CARES Act to, has, deadline has been extended for expenditures from December 30th, 2020, to December 31st, 2021. So as we go through FY, finishing up FY 2021 and into FY 2022, we do anticipate that there will be additional COVID-related expenses, and we'll talk about that more during the budget presentation, because we don't expect this to stop. Even with the vaccine, there might be some certain things that we need to do to continue on to fight COVID and/or any other pandemic. So it's probably the best practices. Moving forward, as far as the revenues for the period ending December 31st, happy to report that tax collections are on par where they were last year. So we don't see any real negative impact from the pandemic on our revenues for the tax collections. We have, again, we're only 0.03% above where we were last year for tax collections. So that's good news there. And then as far as our local estimated receipts, I've provided a separate report to the Board of Selectmen, but just to highlight it, we are above where we were last year by 219,000, and that is due to the short-term rentals. And I do want to point out, and I'll be pointing this out also during the budget discussion, if it weren't for the short-term rentals, the expansion, expansion of that tax, we'd probably be below where we were last year. Most notably, meals tax has been affected by the pandemic. That is $101,000 less than last year for the same timeframe. So just wanted to note that. And then as far as just our general expenses, we're right on target where we should be. We're about 50%, just under 50% expended through December 31st. So no red flags up there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board... And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions for Alex or Jill from the board? Okay, any from the remote participants? Right, I'm not seeing any. Alex, thank you for the update. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll see you, we'll see you in a little bit. Okay? All right. So we're going to move on to, that's completed our coronavirus update for tonight. So we're going to move it on to the public comments period. This is where you, the remote participants may make a comment on any of our business agenda items. Your time is limited to five minutes. And the items that we're discussing tonight are the Town Manager's Budget Summary and Budget Recommendations and the former Eldridge Garage Property Project Update. Is there any remote participants who would like to make a public comment at this time? Okay, I see no hands raised. So we're just going to move on to our Board Discussion Item, Business Agenda, and we'll turn it over to the Town Manager and to the Director of Finance. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I'm going to let Alex get ready for our PowerPoint presentation tonight. And I first want to do, to note that the presentation that we have tonight is following the budget book and budget message that we've posted to the website and in your packet tonight. So while you have 73 pages of information relating to fiscal year '22, and that starts June, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. And there's a lot of information and there's a lot to digest. So with that, we wanted to summarize tonight. And then we have the next three or four Selectmen's meetings to get into details, including at the end of our presentation, discussing which departments you would like to have presented before you. So as we kick off what we call the State of the Town Address tonight, it is looking forward at fiscal year 2022. And as you'll see in the budget message, we're also looking back on the accomplishments of fiscal year 2021 and calendar year 2020. And because of our efforts shortly after the declaration of the emergency by the governor in March and the pivot to an already prudent approach to town finances, including a spending freeze, with close monitoring by the town departments, we closed out fiscal year 2020, which ended on June 30th, 2020, in good, stable condition and great financial health. And with that period, we also received a reaffirmation of our S&amp;P AAA bond rating, and that was done during the pandemic. So it was quite an accomplishment by all. Calendar year 2020 ended dramatically different than how it began. And through our annual budget process, we've worked to ensure that what lies before us is a pathway to sustainability and an investment in our community's recovery. And I'm filled with much gratitude and hope for the steadfast service of our team of dedicated employees who provided the community service and were able to keep it safe, safe and function in 2020 and beyond. And we not only rose to the occasion, we're here tonight virtually, we looked at delivery of our core municipal services and knew innovative ways to provide the services and support our community as a whole. So here we are with more details on the town's fiscal position. Talked a little bit about- Letting Alex get settled.
I'm trying to get this up so I can speak too. So, all right. Here we go. There we are.
There we are. All right, so I'm going to turn this over to Alex and she'll get into the details of the town's fiscal position.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Again, the town's fiscal position is, the Town Manager just mentioned, you know, we are in good shape right now. We do continue looking at a COVID-19 financial plan for FY 2021 to close out in June. But again, looking forward for FY 2022 as we plan the FY 2022 budget. For FY 2021, our property values remain high. They increased by just about 1% over FY 2020. So that equates to a lower tax rate. And again, with that sort of flat amount in the valuation, probably not a large increase in people's tax bills. Again, as the Town Manager mentioned, our AAA bond rating was affirmed in June 2020 during the pandemic, which was a great accomplishment. Again, our conservative forecast for our revenues was something that Standard and Poor's had mentioned in our review. And because of that, our reserves are stable to FY 2021. Well, FY 2021 revenues will be stable to FY 2020. So our reserves are good for this current year. And then we always look at our capital projects, what's been completed and what is scheduled to come up. And we'll be talking about that later in the presentation and actually towards the end of the presentation as we look forward to the Board's Capital Priorities Workshop this coming Saturday. OPEB Funding Strategy, very pleased to report and give the numbers later on in the presentation. With the reallocation of the 1.5% of the 3% land bank surcharge, we have positive traction in OPEB funding. And then the budget and financial policies were updated in November 2019. And again, we tend to review those during the budget summits when we also provide multi-year forecasts. So speaking at the Budget Summit, it was year number nine, and that happened on October 27th, 2020. Again, it's a collaboration between the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Montmore Regional School District. And all the department heads are in attendance as well. We look for the budget directive, which this year for FY 2022, a core services budget to FY 2021 plus any contractual items. So we weren't looking for any large increases or adding new staff. We reviewed the process and the calendar with the Board and the stakeholders. We looked at our revenue and our expense trends. We looked back about five years for the revenue expense trend, revenue trends, and then what our expenses were as well. We provide a long-range forecast, again, a five-year look, looking back, the current year, the proposed FY 2022, and then out a few years. And then we always review our budget and financial policies, whether any updates are needed for those policies and to make sure that we're in compliance with them because that would, if we're not in compliance with our financial policies, that would risk our AAA bond rating. So the FY 2022 Budget Book, which you just received, again, similar to prior years, we have the budget narratives, the budget statements. New for FY 2022, we've included organization charts. They're in one section of the budget book after the Town Manager's submittal and before the individual department. So right before the General Government Department. We did provide the staffing history as we did last year, and that's in the budget narratives. And then Section 10 is the FY 2022 Capital Improvement Plan Requests and the inventory for the five years, looking out for the FY 2022 capital budget, which will be a standalone article out to FY 2026 for the inventory of all projects that we know of right now. We've asked again for everything, whether it's funded by the General Fund, debt, or Community Preservation, Chapter 90, the waterfront infrastructure bond. So everything should be included under Section 10 in the capital improvement inventory list. We ask people to look for at Budget Central. And on the website, we will provide any budget updates. Again, multi-year financial forecasts and policies, our fleet listings, so the listing of all the vehicles that we have, as well as debt schedules. And again, we'll provide any updates there, but we have budgets that go back, I believe, to about FY 2012. So there's a lot of history there as well. So moving along, again, a lot of this information is in the Town Manager's message, but we'd like to highlight some of these items. So the balanced budget, we have to have a balanced budget. So our revenues must support the expenses that are being requested and put forward to town meeting. So because of that, we first look at revenues, the revenue outlook. The largest source of revenue for the town are, is a tax levy. About 70% to 74% annually of our revenue comes from our tax levy. Then we have local receipts. Those are those items that we mentioned, the hotel motel, room occupancy, motor vehicle, transfer station receipts, items such as that. And then other available funds, the Waterways Improvement Fund, the Wetlands Protection Fund, the Recreation Revolving Fund. So different funds that we transfer money from those funds into the operating budget. And anything from local receipts or other available funds is used to offset the amount raised through the tax levy. So once we identify the revenue that's available to use, we look at the expenditures. So we have the General Operating Budget or the General Fund, educational assessments for the two regional school districts, which are voted as separate articles, the Water Operating Budget, which is funded through water rates, and then the Five-Year Capital Plan. The Five-Year Capital Plan, again, the five years out is a plan. We look how we build that in, but we do have the one year, the FY 2022 Capital Budget, which is a standalone article. And then other capital and community priority items are those separate articles for consideration. And then, again, referring to the workshop that we'll be having, the capital priorities and Five-Year Capital Plan. What are the priorities and how do we fund those moving forward? So the budget highlights for FY 2022, again, we consider this a continued COVID-19 financial plan as we are uncertain where revenues will land for FY 2022. But the FY 2022 Operating Budget without the educational assessments is at 2.03% over FY 2021 or $654,297 more than the current fiscal year's budget. And it's presented at $32,864,300. And again, that continues to include some of those small capital outlay items that were formerly in the capital plan or those annual sort of maintenance items that have now moved into the operating budget. And then per our fiscal policies, the FY 2022 Capital Plan should be within the range of 9% of the operating budget, and it is being recommended at $2,881,200, which meets those goals and is funded through free cash and other available funds. So no reliance on the tax levy. And that has been a practice of the town for many years now. So again, just a balanced budget. Our revenues projecting $52,972,000 and change for revenues, and again, the same amount for expenditures. And some of the items I'd like to point out here, in the percentage change, property tax is looking at going up 4.54% at this time. I mean, that is leaving excess levy capacity of almost $1 million on the table. Local receipts are going up by 14.14% at approximately 68% of prior year actuals. And that's an increase. And we needed to look at that because we, as you will recall, we drastically cut those revenues when we had our COVID-19 budget pivot last year. So looking at the revenues coming in, we feel confident that we can raise them at least at this early stage by 700, just over $700,000. State aid, we're leaving it a level amount, flat, because we're not sure where that will come in from the governor. We'll know those numbers, at least the preliminary number will be released later this month. Other available funds, such as the PEG Access, the Waterways Improvement Fund, the Land Bank Fund, that is showing a decrease at this time. Those funds must be in the bank before we can appropriate them. So as those come in, we'll look at that and see if we can adjust those. Important to note that the land bank did expire in January of this year, but there's one more year of debt service, a small amount, 78,000. So that is one of the decreases that makes up that $1.1 million. And then the water fund, funded through water rates, so that has to equal the expenditures. And we're confident that that will come in as the revenues have been strong from the water department. So again, just a chart showing the FY 2022 revenue. At this time, it's looking like the tax levy will be raising about 74% of the revenue. Local receipts, 11%, other available funds, 9%, and water revenue at 6%. And state aid and land bank are negligible, small dollar amounts or small percentages anywhere. And this is very similar to what we've presented in the prior fiscal years. So revenues, again, these are our projections. So our allowable growth for Proposition 2.5 plus our new growth, which is estimated 300,000, will generate $1.1 million in new revenue. Our local receipts, as I just mentioned, was 68% of the prior actuals. And in FY 2021, the current fiscal year, we estimated 57% of FY 2019 actuals. And again, that is keeping down from what we had done last, previous years. Usually we estimate about 80% of prior year actuals, which is a conservative number. But again, not knowing what the pandemic meant, would mean for FY 2021 and still using a conservative approach for FY 2022 until we get to, you know, further on in the fiscal year, we might have a better idea. But again, we're increasing our local receipts, but it's conservative based on the unknown. And as I mentioned, state aid is leveled to the FY 2021 budget. So just a chart on the hotel motel meals tax. And this shows from FY 2016 to FY 2020. And you can see the large jump in FY 2020 as the gray area or the blue-gray area is the hotel tax, which with the expansion to the short-term rentals is much increased over the prior year. But again, as I had mentioned in my update on the revenues, the meals tax is $101,000 less than it was for the same period last year. And the first and second quarters, which we just received, are the highest two quarters for that tax. Moving forward, we always talk about the tax levy, not the tax rate. So again, the property tax is for FY 2022 plus allowable growth. As we're looking at 38,000, 38,939,542, which is a 4.54% increase projected at this time. Interesting to note that we could raise the maximum tax rate or the most that we could raise would be a 7.14% increase, and we're not looking at that right now. Local receipts will increase by 707,000. Again, other available funds, we'll continue to look at as these offset the amount that we need to raise through the property tax levy. And when we look at other available funds, we're looking at, some of those funds have been segregated into separate, or we look at local receipt, receipts, some of those have been segregated into other available funds, such as the WOF Revolving Fund, where some of those local, some of the receipts for that used to come into the General Fund, but now are segregated to the WOF. So we'll look to use the WOF to fund some of those items which are allowable under that, under the town meeting vote for establishing that fund. So chart here on local estimated receipts, this is just what we've estimated over the past five, well, four, past four fiscal years and what we're projecting for FY 2022. You can see we had estimated 6.2, 6.5, 6.5. We, with the COVID-19 pivot, we reduced that number to just over $5 million for FY 2021, where we had originally projected over $7 million in estimated local receipts. And for FY 2022, we're raising that, as I said, by just over 707,000 going forward. Other available funds, free cash, we're planning to use about 2.6 million to fund the capital budget, and that's out of, should be a $4.8 million estimate. Free cash is also used to fund other one-time items and other capital articles and not used to fund the operating budget. The land bank, as I mentioned, we're in our final year of debt service for the land bank. So that is a 78,750 that'll be transferred to pay for that debt. Our PEG Access Funds, right now, we're looking at 50,000. In previous years, we've used 100,000. But again, we will look at that once the funds are received in that account. And the PEG Access, again, is your- And the PEG access, again, is your, the receipts from the cable, operating, the cable bills. And then the waterways improvement fund, $200,000 to fund the harbor master capital and the operating budgets. And continuing on with some of our other available funds, revolving funds. We have the recreation revolving fund, which we're looking to fund, take, fund more of the programs under recreation from the revolving fund. The shellfish revolving fund, which is for propagation costs. We have our receipts reserved for appropriation accounts, the PEG access fund for cable-related expenses, as I just mentioned, and the waterways improvement fund for harbor master expenses. Other available funds are Chapter 90, state aid fund, which is the highway fund that if we have eligible projects, they have to be pre-approved prior to getting the money in. So it's a reimbursable account under Chapter 90. And then new with the short-term rentals, with the expansion of the short-term rentals, is the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund. And as of June 30th, 2020, there was just over $1 million in that fund for Chatham. So there's usually quarterly meetings regarding that fund. And we'll continue to monitor that and see if that can be used either to offset any projects or not incur debt in the future for sewer-related wastewater costs. And then our waterways user fee revolving fund, again, for waterfront infrastructure improvements. An estimated receipts are approximately just over $500,000. And there's a good balance in the waterways user fee revolving fund currently. Free cash, free cash is not available until it's certified by the Department of Revenue. And I expect to have that happen prior to the end of this month. But we're estimating free cash at about $4.8 million and programming $2,647,700 for the capital budget, again, that one capital article. And as we always like to point out, that we did receive $2.265 million from Harwich for the intermunicipal agreement funds, the IMA funds. And in FY 2021, sewer capital under the capital budget was about $385,000. We're not asking for a policy decision this year, but we're just keeping this in mind because we said that we would do that, that we did receive that money from the IMA. And the next IMA payments are anticipated, $1.5 million upon flow from Harwich. And then $1.5 million a milestone payment, which must be received prior to June 30th, 2022. So those are our revenues. And I'm happy to answer any questions right now if you'd like. I'll stop right here.
Okay, Alex, thanks. Any questions for Alex thus far? Jeff?
Alex, thank you. Good stuff. The Cape Cod Water Fund, did I understand correctly that Chatham's share of that is 1.1?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we can use that for what?
I'd have to go back and look at the statute, but I believe it can be used for anything related to wastewater. Dr. Dunkinson is our representative. I've sat in on one of the calls for the meetings or one of the virtual meetings. But I would have to review that. So again, it's.
Dr. Dun, yeah, Dr. Dunkinson has his hand up. Sorry, Alex.
Okay, that's all right.
Dr. Bob?
Yeah, thank you. It can be used for any project that the town already has SRF funding for. And in the case of Chatham and a couple of the other communities, it can also be used to pay down existing debt for wastewater projects that were previously funded.
Okay. Good stuff.
Any more questions, Jeff?
No, that's, that's good. That's good stuff.
Yeah, Alex, on the waterways, here's our revolving fund. Was there an amount you could have told us what it was? You said there was an ample amount, but I didn't know if there was an exact amount.
There is an exact amount. If you just bear with me, I can pull it up right here. The waterways user fee revolving fund as of June 30th had $911,432.04.
And that can be used for any water waste-related items?
It was created by town meeting and the idea was to have it for waterfront infrastructure. And again, it was a recommendation between, you know, from the department with the town manager.
Okay, great. All right, thanks. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alex, it's a good presentation. I have a number of questions for expenditures, but I just have one that I haven't been able to figure out. It's probably very simple. How did you come up with the 300,000 for, for, for new growth?
The 300,000 for new growth, we've used that as a placeholder for many years. Although new growth has been in excess of that, about 400,000 for the past four or five years. It's better to be conservative. And then if it comes in greater than that, usually that creates excess, more, a greater amount of excess levy capacity.
Yeah, okay. I, I kind of thought that. And the only other comment I'd make is on the short-term rental tax that we have. I'm glad that, that when we were discussing this a couple, a couple of years ago, we decided to be conservative and not earmark it for anything. And I'm certainly glad that's what we did. At least we, you have options on what we can do considering so. Thank you. That's it for that.
Okay, great. Thanks, Peter. Dean? Dean, I don't know if you're muted. Why don't you? Dean, you are muted. Can you, there you go. Go ahead.
Sorry.
No worries.
Thank you, Shereen. Alex or Bob? The 1.1 million that Jeff had inquired about in the, in the water wastewater fund, Capewide wastewater fund, is that money that is allocated to Chatham? Or is that money that represents what Chatham has put into it? Because I, I thought it was the latter. And that the formula, there is a formula that is, has been developed for the board to distribute funds to Chatham. But Bob can perhaps enlighten us on this.
Yeah, that's, that's the amount that Chatham has contributed. You're correct. There was discussion early on when the, we were developing the regulations about each town getting out what they put into it. But the real feeling and the way it was set up from day one is it all goes into a fund. And then the towns can, you know, have access to it. There are some limitations to make sure that smaller towns are basically on an equal footing with some of the larger towns that might have larger, more expensive projects. So they, we tried to make it as across the board as even as possible. But yeah, it's basically, it all goes into one kitty and then it comes out based on the current projects that, that a municipality has.
I do remember the document that you were, that you had presented to us for review, which contains some protections for the smaller towns in that regard. Alex, what, where do the funds come that go into the waterways improvement fund as distinct from the waterways user fund?
The funds that go into the waterways improvement fund are 100% of the boat excise tax as well as the moor and fees.
Okay. And my final question, are there any, have there been any compliance issues with respect to the payment of the short-term rental taxes?
I, yeah, I don't know that. Again, because we, I would have to, I don't know if I could request a list of who pays and who doesn't pay. But again, usually the Department of Revenue won't give us any lists on who's paying their taxes and who's registered. And we don't have a registry here, so it.
It's possible, it's possible we may have some non-compliance, but we just don't know. I just wanted to echo what Peter said and the risk of sounding like Johnny One Note here. The short-term rental tax, to me, has been an important safety net for us during the pandemic. The meals, meals revenues are down, the lodging revenues are down. And I just think it's important to keep that in mind when, when the idea is considered.
All right, we've lost Dean on an important note. So maybe he'll call in because he seems to appear to be frozen. So I feel very uncomfortable leaving him like this, but I think we need to move on. So any other questions for Alex from the board? Okay, if Dean comes back, Alex, while you're in your, in your next phase of, of information, would it be okay to have him finish his?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Well, go ahead if you want to move on. Thank you.
On one.
Dean, no, he's not back.
Okay, all right. So moving on, we always talk about our other post-employment benefits funding or OPEB.
So Alex, we're not seeing your screens.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Okay.
Great. That's perfect.
Okay. OPEB, so other post-employment benefits funding. We always talk about OPEB because this is a liability of the town. So I'm pleased to report that the trust fund balance is $2,988,227. So that is an increase. And also the new OPEB surtax that we talked about just a few slides ago, which was the reallocation of 1.5% of the 3% land bank surtax, has raised $275,397 as of December 31st, 2020. So that was on the first half tax bills. So it is safe to assume that we will probably raise about that amount for the second half as well. So that goes a long way to funding our liability. Our required annual contribution is just over $1.5 million. And that's what we are required to pay. So an approximately 700,000 of the annual required contribution is included in the benefits budget on a pay-as-you-go basis. And what I'd like to point out here is that our liability actually decreased $596,000. So we're down to $18.5 million. And it was, as of June 30th, 2019, at $19.1 million was our unfunded liability. So that is good news and shows that, you know, with the reallocation of the land bank surtax at 1.5% plus an annual appropriation, say of 150,000, which we've done from overlay surplus, we can start reducing that liability. So moving into the FY 2022 budget overview. The operating or the town budget is being presented at $32,864,300. School assessments at this time are $9.3 million. That's for the Montemoy Regional School District and Cape Tech. Those may change as they have not been voted by the school committees. And we're still waiting for the health insurance to be set by Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. Water budget, $3,610,555. And as I stated before, the capital budget at 8.07% or $2,881,200. Just to chart on the FY 2022 expenses, where your money goes. You can see that the largest sort of piece of the pie is education, public works and facilities, 14%, public safety, 16%, and debt services, also 14%. Employee benefits is probably the next largest one at 12%. And then the smaller, different departments. So our operating budget, again, $32,864 does not include educational assessments. And it's an increase of just over 2%, 2.03% over FY 2021, or $654,297. And we'll go through some of the items that have changed and point out some of the higher percentages, which sometimes doesn't equate to a higher dollar amount. But we'd like to point those out to the board anyway. So general government is showing an increase of 1.96% over FY 2021. Public safety, 2.71%. Community development is showing a decrease of 6.3%. And that's due to the movement of a position from community development into public works. Natural resources is 1.62%. And public works, again, as we just mentioned, is showing an increase of 6.57, due in part to that position moving from one department into the other, as well as some contractual agreements. And we'll run through these in a few slides. Community social services is just about level funded, small decrease. But again, we continue to fund the childcare voucher program as a separate standalone article, not in human services. So those all total about a 3% increase. However, we have offsets from debt service, which is declining by 3.72% for FY 2022. Employee benefits at this time are showing an increase of 5.64%. Again, not knowing where health insurance is going to land. So that could be adjusted downward when we get those final numbers sometime in February. And then our undistributed insurances and the Finance Committee Reserve Fund is showing a 3.73% increase due to our insurance, public liability insurances and general liability. So that totals a 2.03% increase over the current year budget. And now I'll run through some of the changes within the different budgets. And these are both increases and decreases. Previously, we've shown some of the higher increases, but we wanted to point out the differences between FY 2021 and what's being requested for FY 2022. So the legal services budget, we're asking for an increase of 20,000, and that's based on prior year actuals. Human resources, we're showing a decrease of just over $3,000. And that is savings, which includes the increase of a part-time position to, in the HR benefits, to a full-time administrative assistant who will float between HR and the town manager's office that was discussed at your meeting a couple of weeks ago. Information technology, increase of $80,370 due to contractual services for some of our technology contracts and software licenses. And as we move to get more items online and make things easier to the public, and all this remote participation meetings have also increased some of those technology costs. More in the hardware than the software costs, but still some of the items that impact this budget. Elections, we'll have fewer elections in 2021. So that is showing a decrease of $52,200 over the current fiscal year. Public safety, increase of about $42,400 for fire overtime, some of the equipment and operating costs. No new staff is requested for FY 2022. But again, an increase in overtime to offset some of those costs. Community development, I pointed this out. We're moving the GIS planner moved from community development into DPW. So that provides for savings, even with additional consulting services, about $10,000 requested for the consultant to help with the potential for attainable housing. And here is the offset under projects administration facilities, where the GIS planner moved from community development, $87,125. But I did want to point out that there was a $10,000 request. So that is the, why it's not a dollar-for-dollar swap there. Employee benefits, our Barnstable County retirement assessment showing an increase of $224,359 over the current fiscal year. And that is without adding new staff. So again, just the way that they come up with the assessment that is due from the town. And then we're estimating $78,600 increase in health insurance. We're projecting a 3% increase under that line item. However, the past two years, it's been 0%. So knowing that there's a healthy balance in their reserve, that could come in lower, but it's very conservative to have a 3% increase at this time. So moving forward for one of our larger departments, the Department of Public Works. In the transfer station, we're seeing an increase of $130,080, mostly due to the contracted services for CMAAS and to remove the recyclables. In the sewer, again, $86,300. In the sewer, again, $86,300 for contracted services with Western and Sampson and plant maintenance. And then DPW, recreation and beaches, which used to be parks and recreation. We now renamed it recreation and beaches, $55,438. And some of that is we've centralized all the portable toilets under this department and then seasonal staffing as well. So looking at this, you know, we said DPW is a 6.57% increase overall. Recreation and beaches is 6.36%. Highway is just over 2.25%. Transfer station is almost a 9% increase. Sewer is a 7% increase. We have smaller increases for cemetery at 2.45%, which I haven't mentioned here due to the mowing contract. And then parks and grounds, we've segregated the parks and grounds from parks and recreation. So no dollar amount because it came out of parks and recreation or recreation and beaches. And that's got a 1.9% increase over the current fiscal year. So that's it for expenses. And now we'll move on to our contractual wages for salaries unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Alex at this time? Not hearing any, Alex, so wanted to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so salaries only. We're looking at increases and decreases. So general government, a total overall decrease of $14,604. Public safety, and this does include overtime. So an increase of $172,300. Community development, a decrease, as we just had mentioned, due to the mainly to the switching of the one position to the public works department. Natural resources, pretty level funded, just under $17,000 increase. Public works, again, a large amount due to the transfer. So it's $160,258. And then a small increase in human public services, basically the council on aging department, division 2,472. So overall salaries, again, no COLA was included for FY 2022. This is just steps and longevity, as well as adjustments to seasonal wages. And I think that was it. So overall, a 2.21% increase in salaries and wages. So we'd like to highlight the fact that last year, when we presented the budget originally, we were looking at increasing staff as we have some workload challenges. And you will recall that there was staff requests to increase staff across the town, really. So pre-COVID, it was 14 additional positions and none were funded. So for FY 2022, there's no additional requests. However, there's an increase of .5 FTE, again, to the HR town manager shared position, which is a 0% dollar or $0 amount due to savings in the HR department. So again, want to highlight that our demands have not subsided in FY 2022, especially under COVID. We've had increased demands and things are more complex, a greater reliance on technology and changing regulatory compliance, OSHA, the American Disability Act, public records requests, open meeting law, procurement, all sorts of items that contribute to increased demands. Board commission committee complexity and staff liaison requirements, our project management challenges and some of the training needs. So again, our chart showing where we were and where, oh, sorry. Is there a question?
That was just feedback, Alex. Go ahead.
Sorry. Okay, so our employee trend from 2002 to 2020. We've been fairly level for the past few years. You can see after the recession in 2009, we drastically cut staff. We had some early retirements and slowly been building those back up. But again, level at 132.5. That will be looking up at 133 with the addition of the .5, depending on any other adjustments that might be made, probably downward. We're not looking to add any staff for FY 2022, as mentioned. So moving on to our educational assessments. The Monomoy Regional School District Committee meeting was held on January 14. And they're showing an overall budget increase of 1.5%. So that is not what Chatham will pay, but that's the overall budget is increasing by 1.5% provided it is accepted by the school committee. Chatham's assessment, based on the regional agreement, shows a 0.78% increase or $8.9 million. And they have proposed an alternative assessment, and we've talked about that already. So again, if that was to happen, that would be a 5.8% increase to Chatham. And all of this is dependent on our local minimum contribution, which will be set sometime after the governor releases his numbers. So we won't know this until later on in the budget process. Debt service for Monomoy for FY 2022 is approximately $481,463. And we have, as I just mentioned, our required minimum contribution. So our assessment is in excess of what we're the required minimum contribution is. And here's our slide showing where we were back in FY 2012, prior to regionalization and where we are now. And it's been, you know, ramping up and down again, based on three year rolling average. So for FY 2022 is almost level at this time. If we use the regional agreement assessment to the FY 2021. And again, this may change. If we do, if the town does decide to use the alternative assessment, it would be an increase of 400 and something thousand. I have the number here somewhere. But again, it would be a significant increase rather than .78 to 5.8%. Moving from Monomoy to the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. Again, there you have a budget increase of 1.99%. And the Chatham assessment is projected at $377,576. And that's a 20.65% increase. And that is directly attributed to the number of Chatham students attending the tech. We have an additional five students attending the tech. And because it's a small amount of students, even one student will make a large percentage increase. So that does include the debt service of $149,894. And again, we await the local minimum contribution and the final assessment. So again, a 20.65% increase is just about $78,000. They were projecting that assessment to increase for Chatham. And again, a chart on the tech budget, where it goes. Again, directly attributed to the number of students. But you can see for FY 2021 and 22, it has increased. And that is because it does include the debt service for the new school. So I'm moving on to the water department budget, which is a separate article. The total requested is $3,610,555, increase of 8.05% over the current fiscal year. And it's made up of just over $2 million in salary and expenses. We have $297,000 of overhead, which goes to the general fund. And that is a contribution to the general fund to pay for services provided by the general fund such as, you know, the tax collector's time, legal, et cetera. And then debt service, $1,224,255. Again, the large, there was a large increase several years ago for the water treatment plant, which is a 2% loan through this state revolving fund. So if there's any questions on the operating, I can take that now while I pause for the capital plan.
Any questions for Alex at this time? Alex, everybody's waiting your next presentation. I get one hand up. It's Peter. Hold on. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, Beth, Chair. I couldn't let it go by. Just a couple of questions on, just for my own education. We talked, you talked about zero COLA for this time around it. And the way I read it is it's based on a local economic indicator. Can you just give me an idea of how you determine that, what it would be?
Yes, that the unions several years ago accepted the local municipal growth factor, which are items over which the town, you know, we don't set the rates for these items. So it's items such as the hotel motel tax, the meals tax, motor vehicle, how many people are buying new cars, interest rates and fines and forfeits. So those are some of the items that go into that. Again, we don't set those rates. We have no control over it. So it is directly attributed to how well is Chatham doing rather than saying the CIP for, you know, the Boston area or something.
Or a national one. Okay, that's fine. On the staffing, I just wanted to make a comment. Again, I think we're moving, taking that half a position from HR and putting it together for a full time position across town. I think that makes considerable, it's a good way to do things, you know. And in the end, we're saving money with the exception of benefits, but that's still good. On the union contracts, we won't know what has come of those contracts discussions until June 30, or you're in the process now. You're going to have a placeholder for that, or how is that going to be handled?
Well, because we have the local, all the unions have accepted the local municipal growth factor. We know what the factor is for FY 2022. So that's the 0% COLA. Now, if there are other items that need to be funded by town meeting, we would hope that we could get those settled prior to town meeting and present those as a separate warrant article.
So they don't get into the fact of step increases and all of that. It's just, or the benchmarking of what the wages are against, what's best practices or anything like that is, I guess I'm asking.
Well, we haven't begun negotiations yet. We're just starting. I think we've just scheduled the meeting. So I don't know what the unions will be asking for. And again, you know, we look, I think unions always look to see if their wages are competitive with their neighbors. But again, with our local municipal growth factor, over the past several years, they've received increases from 2.56 to 3%. So again, we've had fairly good increases over the past several years based on that local economy.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions for Alex? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so moving on, so our FY 2022 capital budget. Again, within the 9% of the operating budget per policy, coming in at 8.07, not including the separate warrant articles. We always like to point that out. But however, I'd like to point out that we received, and again, this is all the requests, $29.9 million in requests for FY 2022. Includes, you know, the large ones that we will separate out, CPA requests. Regardless of the funding source, we asked for everything. So we're recommending $2,881,200. Again, no impact on the tax levy. Everything is coming from free cash and/or other available funds. We asked for items ranging from $7,500 up to 8.6% for the overall inventory and financial picture. And again, from FY 2022, out for the five years as well. So looking at this, and these aren't funded by water rates, but the water capital is funded by water rates, not the general fund items. Water capital is presented as separate warrant articles. So the capital budget for FY 2022, here you can see the requests. Public works had the largest amount, $21.9 million. And we're funding them at $760,000 in the capital budget. However, there will probably be requests for separate warrant articles that will be discussed in the coming week. So the general government, you can just see the requests and then the recommendations and then the funding sources, with the bulk of the funding source from free cash, some from the Waterways Improvement Fund, cemetery sale of lots for the cemetery request, PEG access, those cable funds, and then prior articles. The town clerk had an article out there that is going to fund the new voting machines. Partially fund the new voting machines. So speaking of capital planning and community prioritization, this coming Saturday, January 23, the board has a workshop to discuss capital planning and community prioritization. We'll look at those other capital projects and articles that were identified in our capital inventory, but not funded under the capital budget for FY 2022. And whether those will be funded by debt, pay as you go, whether it is from free cash or the available tax levy or community preservation projects. We do have $1.9 million in community preservation projects that have been requested. And the CPC will be meeting next Monday to continue review of those projects. Community prioritization in regards to affordable and attainable housing, the Chatham Elementary School, the Council on Aging, and again, the COVID-19 continued response costs, as we're calling them. So some of those items that are under review or will need to be reviewed. The Council on Aging, Design and Construction, the amount. The Eldridge Public Library envelope, $645,000. The Eldridge Public Library site, $510,000. And as you recall, we had used $443,000 of those funds to fund the emergency repairs in FY 2021. The belt filter press for sludge at the sewer, at the wastewater treatment plant, $4.5 million. Stormwater, $4.5 million. And then the continuation of the wastewater project, which is eligible for those 0% interest loans through the state revolving fund at $7 million. And continuing on, some of the smaller items, dredging, $300,000. We do have an amount of dredging in the capital plan, but this is a supplemental request as well. OPEB usually coming from overlay surplus, $150,000. The childcare voucher program, continuation of that at $75,000. The Chatham Elementary School alternative assessment would be an increase of $446,990 if we, if the town chooses to go in that direction. COVID response costs, we're still determining those costs. Water capital, again, funded through water rates, but at 4 million, at over $4 million, this would require bonding. And then the Community Preservation Act, which I mentioned, $1.9 million in project requests. And some of those are holdovers from FY 2021, where we just funded mainly the affordable housing and the Eldridge Public Library under the Community Preservation Act and deferred everything to FY 2022 to save money, not knowing what was happening with the pandemic. So again, looking forward to FY 2022, we're still predicting that we will feel the impacts of COVID. So we're looking at a core services level funded to FY 2021 budget. We instructed the department heads to, you know, trim expenditures wherever possible and level fund as much as possible. And then strategic budgeting, identify ways to support residents and businesses to soften the impact and promote a faster recovery by adding and redirecting resources. And then what's next? Well, we will receive the preliminary comments from the Finance Committee. And then the transmit to the Finance Committee, the Board of Selecting Recommendations, no less than 30 days, so by March 1, 2021. And we'll continue to provide updates. So by March 1st, 2021, and we'll continue to provide updates as new information is received, such as the governor's budget, the health insurance rates, and any changes from the Montemoy Regional School District and/or the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. So wrapping it up for FY 2022 is the budget calendar. This is tentative, again, tonight, January 19th. The town manager's budget, recommended budgets to the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee. In February, the Finance Committee preliminary recommendation to the Board of Selectment, again, prior to March 1st. February 23rd, the board, oh no, I'm sorry, by February 23rd, the board approved budgets to FinCom by March 1st. And then March 22nd, the Finance Committee recommendations for inclusion into the warrant, as the warrant closes on March 23rd, in advance of a town meeting, which is scheduled or tentatively scheduled for May 10th, 2021. And that wraps it up for me tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alex, thank you very much. That was a very thorough report. We appreciate that. Any questions, any more questions for Alex right now, or further comments? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Shereen. Alex, great job once again. I thought the budget overview in the package was excellent. I applaud you and Jill and the team for bringing an operating budget in at 2%. Most notably, bringing in salaries and wages at 2.2% is pretty remarkable. I think that's driven largely by the absence of a COLA. But again, kudos to the team for the past work in negotiating that. I think we have a lot of work to do this weekend on Saturday, so I think we'll do some heavy lifting there. That'll certainly have some impact on where we land ultimately with this budget. But, you know, as a general comment, holding expenses the way you have, I think, is remarkable. There are a couple of areas, you asked initially if we wanted any follow-up discussions. I have two or three. I have water and wastewater and the DPW. I think you explained the increase in the DPW very well, but I just want to kind of drill down and see the list of that $26 million bucks that he's got as capital request. I just think it's of interest. And then water and wastewater, I mean, I just want to see kind of how it all fits together. And I know a lot of it's funded by the water, you know, the water funds itself. However, I just want to get my arms around where we are with respect to the long-term plan as well. So those are my comments. Really great job, again, once again. And I look forward to this weekend immeasurably on Saturday morning. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jeff. I was going to request the DPW too, because I thought that was a pretty interesting number. Any other comments or requests?
Shereen?
Yes?
Shereen, it's Dean. I've had to follow this on my cell phone only.
Okay.
My internet and my regular phone are down.
Go ahead, Dean.
So I just wanted to add to the comment that I started to make before I was cut off and put through the connection. It had to do with the short-term rental tax. And, you know, I just think it's a safety net. We've seen it as a safety net. We're seeing it now as a safety net during this pandemic. And I think that makes a strong argument for not trying to earmark it. I know others feel differently about it, but I just really wanted to make that point. I do applaud Alex and Jill for the presentation. And Alex, since I wasn't able to follow the slides except orally by phone, could you please forward me a full set of the presentation by email?
Yes. Yeah, we can do it.
Thank you, Shereen.
Okay, thanks, Dean. Any other comments or questions for Jill or Alex tonight? Okay. All right. So we do have our workshop on the 23rd. It should be pretty interesting in full. Everybody be prepared. Any final words from you, Alex or Jill, tonight?
I just wanted to note that there's a lot of department staff at all levels that contributed to the budget message. And as you'll see in reviewing the budget documents, we have an economic conditions report. We have an update to the wastewater projects. We have information about the water projects. Certainly not as detailed as we'll get into moving forward. But there's also updates about our renewable energy, our technology, and next steps, we call it, of where we're going. And I think that what you'll find is both the operating and capital budgets are working towards what we talked about at the last meeting, the preservation of our community and our community values. And I do want to acknowledge that we heard the board, and I think that was a really important comment in a full, basically a full nine months of having those type of community discussions and hearing from the community that led to this budget message and the budget book as presented. So we have a few more weeks to go through with the board before you transmit it. And thank you for your, this is a lot to go through, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you, Alex. It was well done tonight. So we appreciate that. We'll move on then, if nobody has any other further questions. Okay. All right. Our next agenda item tonight is the Eldridge Garage property update. I think that we have Terry Whalen and our consultant president. I thought I made a note about his name. I'm sorry, I don't see it. Hold on just a second. I'm sorry, I don't have, I thought I made a note about his name. Go ahead, Terry.
Architect Kurt Raiber.
Kurt, hi. Kurt Raiber. Yes, hi. Raiber. Thank you. Sorry, could have looked and read your name on the meeting. Go ahead, Terry. Welcome, everyone.
Great, thank you. Good evening. So in your package, you had a kind of a overview staff report, basically, tonight. Katie Donovan's here as well tonight, too, in case there are any questions come up about the efforts of the Planning Committee that preceded this project that we're, you know, continuing to refine as we move forward. So tonight's presentation, again, I'm going to be pretty quick so I can turn it over to Kurt. Kurt Raiber from Catalyst is going to take us through the findings. So similar to all our projects, we're gathering all the information, reviewing existing conditions, looking at options in detail. They reviewed the structural condition of the former filling station portion of the building to see for its reuse, potential reuse, and then have put it together, you know, in order of magnitude cost to help us, you know, get some sense of where this may or may not fit in in the overall capital planning for the community. And then Kurt is going to be looking for some feedback as well to get some direction on some key decision points. But I'm going to let him take you through that. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kurt and Kurt Raiber. And I'm going to be running the slides, but Kurt's going to run us through there. And hopefully, we can run through the presentation, you know, in short order, but enough detail that hopefully we'll answer questions if that's okay with the chair. And then we'll obviously open up to questions and answers for detailed discussion.
Shereen? Shereen?
Yes, Dean.
Is it, I realize this is a special request, but since I can't view the slides, can Terry email those to me right now, and I could at least see the slides through email?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Welcome. And Kurt, why don't you proceed?
Well, thank you very much. And I know Terry's going to send that off to Dean. And then he's going to turn on the slideshow. And Terry, I'll just say next or next slide, please, when I want to advance. But just as an intro, I'm Kurt Raiber. I'm one of the partners at Catalyst Architects. We're in Yarmouthport, formerly known as Brown Lincoln, Richard Raiber. We just recently rebranded. And my associates, Maria and Steve here, along with our consulting landscape architect, Mr. Olmstead, and coastal engineering, have been looking at the site. And we've been concentrating first on sort of the building and the program, what might go in the new comfort station there in the old filling station building, or perhaps in a newer, larger building, depending on, you know, what we talk about and share it tonight. We've been through the building. We've measured it. We've drawn it in very close detail. So we know a lot about the building. It is certainly in the historic district and of historic age. Parts of the building are in quite poor condition, where the building sits down in the grade, and water and some rot and everything have certainly affected the building. It can be repaired. And we're going to show some slides, including a floor plan of the building remodeled, and also a floor plan of a larger project. But the slide that everybody hopefully can see now, page one, and there's only 12 pages, and we'll kind of go through them. And as Terry mentioned, stay along, as long as you'd like and answer questions. But if you really feel the question's important, please interrupt. So this first slide shows the previous concept that was, came out of a working group back in October of 18. And this shows the old filling station building in a small lawn area that's at the sort of south end, south being bottom of the page, end of the grass area that's running parallel with Main Street, and an improved parking lot, and some existing trees remain. And then at the rear of the lot, there's a wildflower meadow, sort of as seen as a passive recreation area and a green space in town, but wouldn't be fully developed as, you know, as additional parking. So this is the plan that the Select Board saw, you know, about two and a half, a little over two years ago. The, like I said before, we've been through the building, and we know now what we can fit inside of it. So why don't we advance to the next slide? And we started by looking at what are the, you know, kind of requirements of the improvements there? We want to renovate or replace the building. It includes new public restrooms. We want to also improve the parking lot with new paved area and proper drainage. And the amenities included in this project should be, you know, new landscaping, sidewalks, crosswalks with ADA compliance, et cetera. And now we've been asked, and we'll make that match, other design work and other construction work that's been put in place on both sides of our site by DPW already. Street parking and parking lot lighting, a water bottle filler, a charging station, bike racks and bike repair station are all amenities that the committee has asked us to include. And of course, we'd always want to include some benches and trash receptacles and other appropriate site furniture, perhaps bollards or traffic control devices. Then, as I mentioned, there'll be this natural open space in the back, perhaps with a couple of other benches or perhaps a little path through there, just a little respite area. And then, I think, since the board last saw the project, and you may be aware that there are sometimes during deluge kind of rain events, which we've had several of recently, water ponding in Main Street right in front of this site. So part of this project will include stormwater drainage facilities under this parking area to infiltrate stormwater from the street itself. Previous to the sewer work or perhaps other construction work on adjacent properties, there was a drain pipe that has either been damaged or removed or whatever. But water used to drain out of the catch basins in Main Street off to the site southwest of our site here. But that's not working anymore. Not sure exactly why. But we will be, with coastal engineering's help, designing a stormwater system to absorb and infiltrate stormwater from the street into the underground below our site. That may or may not help us pick a location for the renovated building or a new building. Let's take the next slide. We know we have an existing historic building. But as I mentioned in the introduction, we've been through the building. We know it's got some, you know, rotten timbers and specifically where it sets down in the grade. The time and moisture has caused that deterioration. And it's, this work can all be, this rotten structure can all be repaired. But it will be a significant amount of repair. And we do feel that the building would qualify as a remodel, but not a restoration. And for us, a remodel is building it new or repairing it in kind, but not to the exact detail and exact methodologies. Because this building is going to be renovated to a point where it would have to meet new building codes and new energy codes so that it could be used into the shoulder seasons. We still believe it'll be a seasonal building. But the walls are too thin to hold the proper amount of insulation. The sheathing underneath the siding will mostly need to be removed and replaced. The building is actually a little bit short. And as we raise it out of the ground, we might make it a little bit taller to help facilitate higher ceilings inside, ventilation, and other things that might be recessed into the ceiling attic structure, which is not that large in this building. We do think that if we choose a remodel project in this footprint, we can make it work. We can have the same size of the footprint, in the same shape of the building, in the same style. We will be picking it up and putting it on a new foundation. So that means we could slightly alter its location to help perhaps with the traffic flow around the parking lot. But these are things that are all sort of flexible. And we'd like to hear comments about, from the board, about what they think about, you know, keeping the building or keeping the building in its location and how important that is to you. The building is a little bit small. It's only about 540 square feet. And in that, we can get just three small toilet rooms and the associated support spaces, leaving a little bit of space for that parking operation to be a small storage space. So when we get to the plan, I'll walk you through that. But the question comes, is this enough? Is this enough facilities for the location, and does it meet the town's needs? So we're going to look at a new building scheme as well, which would be slightly larger. We've included some covered exterior porches. And this is intended to be sort of shelter from bad weather or a gathering spot where you might meet some people. But more importantly, it may provide an outdoor queuing area and waiting space for people who are waiting in line to use the bathroom on a very busy day, like on a parade or, you know, in the peak season. It certainly would or could offer larger restroom facilities, more fixtures, larger bathroom facilities with two or three sinks, two to three toilets in both the men's and the women's room. The location of the building is, because it's a little larger, we envision this being a little bit harder to locate because of the extent of the drainage structures that will be built underneath the parking lot. However, we'll show you a plan where this newer building might be linear and stretch out parallel to the edge of Main Street. Why don't we go to the next slide, Terry? So here's our drawings of the existing filling station. The floor plan right in the center, and the lower side of the page is the front of the building facing Main Street. And you can see on the north elevation, top left corner, that's what you see when you're standing in Main Street looking back at it. The upper right is the rear, and then left and right sides respectfully. The plan, once you go in the building, the purple area is sort of like a, just a small office retail area, perhaps when it was a filling station, with a little countertop that was probably once upon a time a register. The little tan area in the middle left of the plan is a The little tan area in the middle left of the plan is a small office. There was one restroom in the pale green and then the slightly darker green at the top of the page is a small storage room at the rear side of the building, which was being used for storage by the parking valet concession that was operating there for the last couple of years. So you can see this is a tight little plan, not very much room, but as we go to the next screen, oops, we skipped one, there we go. On the right side of the plan, there's two columns and a third column at the rear of the top side of this plan. And what we were thinking there was what we create a little covered porch as an entrance into this and it would mimic the roof shape on the other side. So we added some features, but create a little symmetry. This would be built in kind. And then at the rear of the building, we would also square off the back to sort of match the front, giving a little bit of a respite area in shade for the valet who is running the parking operation. And what this really does is gives us a little bit larger roof shape to put mechanical systems like exhaust fans and other things up in the attic space across the length of the building. It's just kind of future looking, but we think it'll kind of make, we can make that look like it's always been there. Again, we know that the roof is, the roof structural members are undersized and when we go to rebuild this building, we'll have to reframe the roof with deeper members and insulation. We can make it look like the old building, but it'll virtually be a new roof made to look old. The next slide is a slightly larger version. The renovated Scheme A was 644 square feet. This is about 450 square feet bigger and this is a Scheme B or a new building scheme. The purple would be all outdoor public space, so you'd enter directly into the restrooms from outdoors and there'd be a little passage from Main Street on the lower side of the plan to a covered porch on the west, south side of the southwest side of the building facing the parking lot. So on either side, pink for women's, blue for men's. And in the center is mechanical closet for hot water heater and another one on the opposite side for electrical, a little storage closet for the parking vendor and a janitorial space that would be shared between both sides. Just as a comparison to the other side, this is a total of 10 plumbing fixtures and the other planned Scheme A really only had six. In this scheme, we have a larger public men's room and women's restrooms and in the previous scheme, we had three small toilet rooms, one of which was a unisex or what's now commonly called a family restroom, which is usually a lot larger, plenty of room for someone who might be escorting somebody who needs assistance or somebody helping somebody in a wheelchair or perhaps maybe it's a mother with two or three kids and plenty of room for the diaper changing station, et cetera. So two different ways of, of looking at the project. This one just happens to be a bit larger, but what's really unique about this is that all this public space is outdoors and we were thinking in the, well, everything's different the way we think now in the era of COVID-19, but we were thinking all the lines waiting was, is all outdoors in this scheme, which is, hopefully COVID will be behind us soon, but I think everybody's thinking a little bit differently about how they use public facilities, especially restrooms. So let's advance. We wanted to ask the board a couple of questions. What has changed since you saw this plan or this idea in 2018? Does the board have new thoughts or concerns since looking at the project two years ago? Will the valet parking operation remain in place or will perhaps new parking controls or perhaps even a digital or mobile based app replace the parking operation in some time? Has the COVID pandemic changed the view of the, the way people think about public restrooms? And it certainly will change the way we design them and build them, but also change how the town will operate and maintain the restroom going forward or all the restrooms going forward. And then we wanted the board to think about sort of right sizing the project. How many toilets are needed at peak season? How many are needed in the non-peak season? And we want to, of course, think about building, a building that will withstand the elements on the outside and the weather exposure that you have there in Chatham, but we're also thinking about a building that's durable on the inside and will live up to rigorous, thorough cleanings of every surface on the inside is that will be the new expectation, I'm sure. And then of course, you know, what goes without saying, this building should be built to last 30 or 40 years or beyond. And then we're anxious to hear your thoughts on the appropriate schedule for this, perhaps phasing the work where the drainage, which needs to happen right away, could perhaps be advanced ahead of the building. And then on the next slide, we'll, we'll look at, we'll get to the budgets. So after looking at the budgets and looking at these plans and discussing those tonight, I just wanted to kind of lay out what our next steps would be. We'll certainly be refining these building plans after hearing your comments on developing, building elevations for each scheme, developing a thorough site plan for each scheme coordinated with the underground utilities and drainage structures, revising and refining the landscape plans for both. Coastal Engineering will be completing its survey and drainage design, which will inform the parking layout and the building location. And then we'll, with those two building schemes and some specifications of what those buildings will include, we'll be going to an independent cost estimator as part of our contract to get a much more refined cost estimate for the construction. With that in hand, we'll be back to the board to report, but why don't we advance and I'll show you quickly. I think the, the report that you got in, in advance of this meeting and this presentation talked about a range of 1.4 to 1.6 million. These two sheets, let's see, this is, yeah, pages nine and 10, nine being Scheme Budget A and page 10 being Project B. Breakdown, sort of the building cost on a square foot cost basis, we're using a pretty high per square foot cost because we've seen very high numbers from sub bids in the chapter 149 construction realm, but mostly because these buildings are very small. And in, when we go to a public bid on a very small building that's built with high-end durable materials, the cost per square foot is going to be well beyond that of, you know, even a high-end house. But we've used some pretty conservative numbers on the per square foot basis to get to a building cost. We've added inline items for the landscaping and site features and then middle of the page talks about site work costs, subtotal of that horizontal and vertical construction. And then we've added in 10% contingency management, design fees, testing, other things that kind of typical to a public construction project to get to kind of a total of soft costs. And then of course, I did not add anything in for cost of borrowing or financing or anything, we'll, we'll get to that, but when we have a better sense of the, of which project. But we did these projects, both A are these two budget for Project A and Project B to kind of look at the difference between the, the two buildings really and look at what the overall project cost could, could grow to. But we wanted to get these, kind of this budget range in front of the board and hear your thoughts on those. Page 11, the next page. We've added, this is the same site plan that we looked at on page one, however, it shows in the pink, the second building and where it might go, just as a juxtaposition or to the other filling stations' location, just because I thought you'd be curious as where it might fit in and why would this make sense? Well, certainly the underground drainage structures are going to be in the middle of this center parking area to the south and the north of the filling station and because those are the lowest points in the site. And closely adjacent to Main Street too. So this is just showing you the, the difference in size in the two buildings and a potential location for each, but quite honestly, either building could be moved slightly one way or the other. The filling station project might want to move closer to the street, giving us a little bit more easy flow through the parking lot. Right now, it really kind of sticks into the parking flow and it's a bit forced. The, why don't we advance to the, the last page? Want to take your questions and, and give you the answers best I can tonight and if I can't, I will certainly research that and be back in touch with Terry and Kathleen just as quick as we can. But while we're, you're thinking questions, I'll, I'll just point out that working with Katie and Terry, we decided to put these two floor plans side by side just so you can get a sense of their, the differences between the two of them. And we'll leave the slide here while we answer your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I worked on the Eldridge Garage Parking Committee with, with Dean. We had over 18 meetings with the stakeholders and the neighbors, business community and, you know, I, we made our recommendations and I, I thought we had asked to have some inclusion into some electric charging stations and definitely look at cost for digital parking. The building was always an enigma, I thought, because we weren't really sure, you know, whether it was something that we could keep or, or rebuild or whatnot. I never imagined it to be bigger. Wanting to, I guess from the neighbors, the feeling that it should be fitting to the neighborhood and what was there prior, but not to say that I'm not open to it. I'm just, it just, this seems like a much larger sort of scope of project than I had imagined when we first started it. But I don't have any questions except for where maybe some cost for electric charging stations could play into this and also the cost of the digital parking aspect of, of, not doing valet, but doing that. I don't know if we had a policy change on that or whether there's been additional information from the town manager on whether valet versus that might be more feasible. I don't know, but I have, I wanted to ask Dean if he had any questions prior out of respect that he was on the committee with me. I know he's viewing this online. Dean, did you have any questions right now?
Yeah, I have some comments. Thank you very much, Serena. I have been able to follow the slides on, I'm working on my iPhone here. I, I really appreciate your pointing out the, the work that was done by the committee. It was a very comprehensive process. Every committee and board in the town was asked for their input and several did respond and we'd heard from neighbors and anybody who was interested and there were scores of ideas that were put forward. So it was a very thoughtful process and I, I, I kind of share with you, the, the, the building that's on there is the, is the, the sole remaining building from the Eldridge Garage property and it has this historic connotations and any, any demolition of that would, would require the approval of the HPDC and I'm not sure where they would stand on it. And I think that replacing it with a newer and larger building, I think really takes away from the history. As far as the, the capacity for the restrooms, I think we need to keep in mind that even though we would like to see some restaurants there, we do have the, the restrooms at, at K Cool Park, which is not too far away. So I don't think you really need a, a very large restroom facility there for it. I, I, I also wonder whether any restoration of that, of the existing building might be able to tap into some CPA funding where available as a matter of historic preservation. And I guess my, my final comment is, well, two comments additionally. I believe that George Olmsted offered the, generously offered the services of his son who is a landscape architect and I assume that's somehow going to be factored in if it's legally permissible. And, and my last comment is, I really do think it's important and I understand the fiscal circumstances we're in and hopefully at some point we'll be out of COVID, but we will have learned to make certain accommodations in the post-COVID period that may affect parking, may affect restrooms and so forth and in, inside facilities. But I, I, I do think it's important that we move forward with something. I'm not suggesting that we should present a $1.5 million project to the annual town meeting upcoming in May, but I'd like to see some sort of initial phase of that, of this project put forward to the annual town meeting because I really think it's, it, we owe it to the time and effort that have been, that has been put into this by, by so many people. We had nine people on this committee broadly representative of the community. And I also think that it's important that people understand that there is a vision for this property that was, was very finely developed and that we should try to obviate the inclination to use the Eldridge Garage property to locate other structures on it, which really aren't relevant to the history of that location. So I, I'm very much in favor of some sort of segmented or phased approach to this. It may not necessarily relate to the building itself, but I think we should put something forward to town meeting in, in, in May. I'm not quite sure what it is at this point, but I do think that's, that's my inclination. Thank you very much for calling on me.
Thanks, Dean. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I was, I was on the planning board at, at the time this was being looked at and, and we did make a, a presentation to the, to the group. Let me just give you a couple of comments. I, I can understand what you're talking about, having an open entrance between and expanding the building, but I've kind of leaned in the same way that my, the, the last two speakers are. When, when this was all being discussed, it was, it was not to make a whole new building. However, I'm very, you know, most of us are familiar with trying to redo and re, remodel buildings and, and this one is small enough, I guess, that you really know what's going to happen when you tear down the wall or take down the wall. So that's going to be relatively expensive. In that regard though, I still think that if you're going to have to raise it, I think you would, should move it towards a parallel to the street or something to that effect as long as that doesn't cause any problems with the HPDC, mainly because it's easier access from the, from the walkway. It also makes it better, I agree with you, on getting traffic through there, kind of like a little bit of, you've kept the same building, but you've expanded it somewhat. It's a small area as you enter, so if we're post-COVID and whatever and you, you're going to need a whole bunch of stuff on that roof, I would imagine, I mean, inside the, the, in the attic area. So from my perspective, I, I, I think it So from my perspective, I think it should be moved. I also, well, one of the recommendations the planning board had was you have electric charging stations. You know, there aren't a lot of parking spaces there, but you probably need at least two because you have Teslas and others. And every car manufacturing now is putting out electric vehicles of one sort or another. So it makes sense to, I don't know, there's a number of ways to do it, but at least to have those two different kinds that are there. Mentioned benches and whatever. And I'm not sure whether, well, it seemed to me that it would be nice to have a bench in the green area. But I don't know whether we were trying to keep it, not having that. But it seems to me that it's a great place to look out over the water. We should have at least one bench out that way. Or maybe two, I'm not sure. Let me see if there's anything else I had here. No, I had the same question about how is that, how are we going to do parking? We do rentals, we do electronically. However, I like the idea, you didn't bring this up, but I like the idea of a shuttle of sorts that would go back and forth, and maybe that's why we keep parking. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, Peter, thanks. Jeff, you're next.
Yeah, thank you, Shereen. Boy, I'm not going to repeat what everybody's just said. I absolutely agree with Selectman Kokolas that the building is kind of, I appreciate what Architect Raver said about it's kind of standing on it. It's in the middle of something. I want to get it closer to the road and out of the way a little bit to make that parking area more rational. I think it's just not rational with the building where it's located. I want to get it closer to the road. Whether we do Scheme A or Scheme B, Scheme A is where we're pouring good money after really a kind of really ancient historical structure. I get it. If that's where we go, you know, I just want it to be, you know, up to snuff. I think we're going to spend a lot of money to keep the historical structure there, to be honest with you. But I do want it close to the street. I think we go with digital parking. And I think we, whatever we do, whether it's old or new, it's very evocative of what we have there now. And we don't lose the sense and sensibility of that gas station. I could be convinced that newer building is the way to go, by the way. But it should be closer to the street. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Cory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only few comments I'm going to add to what has been previously said, which most of it I agree with, is, you know, I know the history of this property, I know the public support for this property. But my biggest fear right now is we have such a big basket of projects on our plate right now that this project may have less urgency and said. So, you know, we may get this pushed down the road a little bit longer than we would have liked to. If there's a segmented process to attract, to start the process, I'd be open to have that conversation. I mean, there's a drainage issue for sure that needs to be addressed. The neighbors have been very patient with that and brought that to the attention multiple times. So the drainage issue needs to be addressed sooner than later. You know, once we get into the hardscaping and landscaping components of it, I have certain thoughts about that, but it's a little too early with that. But, you know, I like to kind of see where this falls. I guess, you know, Saturday morning could be a big discussion point. You know, very supportive of tackling this project. I just don't know where in the timetable it is going to fall, being put up against all the other projects that are on our plate right now. So that is it at the moment.
Thanks, Cory. Jeff, your hand's up again.
Yeah, sorry, Shereen. I just, you know, I don't get the opportunity much to weigh in on a former concept known as a shuttle. So the fact that Selectman Kokolas brought it up warms the cockles of my heart, to be honest with you. I do think a shuttle is an excellent idea, and I will continue to espouse that position. And I think charging stations are a no-brainer. Thanks.
Shereen?
Yes, go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out that the idea of a shuttle was in the recommendation of the committee. They talked about a shuttle to the lighthouse and shuttle to the fish pier. And as far as, and so were charging stations. As far as the parking, and admittedly, COVID changes a lot of things. And I'm not sure where this ultimately ends up. But I think they talked about valet parking. And the reason for that was that if you have 64 marked spaces on those days of high usage in the summer, a valet system can park more than 64 cars in that lot. We were told that by the people that do the valet work at the Eldridge. So that was one option. I understand what you're saying about electronic and other more technology efficient ways of managing the parking. And with respect to what Cory and I think Jeff kind of intimated as far as the costs and where we are in terms of our other projects. And we are going to talk about these things on Saturday morning. And hopefully, this will, you know, be part of that conversation. I would just like to see some sort of a marker in the upcoming town meeting by a special article or whatever to make this, put this project on track, even if it's a modest attempt, as Cory suggested, to deal with the drainage issues, which are very compelling in the neighborhood there. So that's where I'm coming down on this. Thank you.
Thanks. I could agree with you on the phased approach and taking care of the drainage issue, definitely. It seems to have been a longstanding program, I mean, problem, maintaining the valet parking for now. Dean, I just want to point out that I think it would be really good if we had, take a look at the daily numbers for parking that the valet company has provided us for the last couple of years. And I don't think that parking lot's been a capacity yet, except for maybe a special occasion. So going digital in a parking thing is probably pretty feasible at the end of the day. Katie has her hand up, and she was, she sat in on our meetings and oversaw this project for us as we went through it as a working group. And I'm sure she's got some things to add. Katie?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just, I had wanted to weigh in that we did include the recommendations that the Eldridge Garage Property Planning Committee made to the board with the RFP. So I believe that, you know, overall, the idea would be to incorporate, you know, these ideas into the overall design. Coming to you tonight, you know, again, I think that we had all agreed that the first step was to determine whether or not the building was able to be reused or if, you know, a newer building needed to be built. And I think that that was kind of the direction, again, that we're looking for, you know, from the board tonight or in the near future. I did want to reiterate, and I think that Selectman Castro just said it, that the original recommendation was that we, you know, utilize the valet service for their summer months only because of the fact that they could potentially, you know, have more cars on there than would originally be allowed or just by the parking stalls traditionally. But I just wanted to just, you know, let you know that I was available if you had any questions or any, you know, concerns about anything that the committee had recommended that wasn't being addressed at this point in time.
Okay. So more feedback on the building, per se, I guess, from my perspective. My initial gut was, the building is, you know, I mean, everybody saved that small little garage, you know, the building and wanted to keep that as the flavor of how it is. I think adding extra porches and things like that, I don't know if that's really, if it needs to go a little larger to accommodate a restroom facility, maybe that's the idea. But anything else other than that, I'm not sure that it's really necessary or appropriate in the spirit of what everybody was looking at when they looked at that building. That's my thoughts on the building. Peter, any thoughts on the building?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, the comment about phasing, I think I heartily agree with that. And I think we should find a way to do that to keep it on, keep it on track. You know, they probably have a better idea of whether, what part of the building we would get involved with. But I think the taking care of the water drainage is something that would be helpful for the whole town in any case. Bike racks, I know, I don't have a problem with bike racks. We recommended it with the planning board, but we don't want bikes going down Main Street. So we're going to have to, once we have a bike racks there, we're going to have to figure out or send it to the bike waste committee on how we get bikes down there. Not a big deal, but the police are always talking about having bikes on Main Street, and it's a problem. Thanks.
Okay, Cory?
Just a thought, not a position one way or another on the building, but I completely hear and understand your concept of the spirit of maintaining the building size and character. But on the other hand, just for conversation or thought process, if we ever were to, you know, do a shuttle to the beach and expand the use of that area, that building could become the changing area for families, et cetera, et cetera. So you've got to understand what kind of volume you're going to put on that building to adequately meet the needs of whatever we design. So I just want to keep that in mind that we, as we designed this master plan concept, that when we understand that if we put A in place, that we need B to balance it, or we might shortchange ourselves. So just for thought process, I got to throw it out there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Further questions? Go ahead, Dean.
I want to echo what you just said, yourself about the building. I share the same views that you do, Shereen, about the preservation of the building and keeping it, you know, close to its existing size. And, well, I was going to add something more in a humorous vein, if you want to. In regards to what Cory just said, maybe we could put the Coast Guard boathouse over at the Lighthouse Beach and use that as a changing section. But anyway, we're going to talk about that next week. Thank you.
We are. Okay. All right. Any other feedback at this time from the board? Okay, all right. Okay, so do you have any questions for us, Kurt? Any more questions?
I'm in the process of looking at the possible for the digital parking systems. And I'm familiar with the ones that the MBTA, you know, you kind of pay for a spot on an app. But more familiar and local to my office is, you know, down at Ocean Street in Hyannis. It's kind of the honor system. You walk up to the kiosks, you slide your card in, and you pay for a spot for anywhere from one to six hours. Is that the kind of system that you're thinking about when you say digital parking? And would that be here or would that be in other places in town? Because installing something like that specific to one small site has a certain cost. It certainly, if you buy that system, you can implement it in numerous sites. So I was sort of being asked, how many spaces and how many locations would that system?
So we have tasked staff to look at paid parking options for downtown Chatham. One, Selectman Dykens had asked that be explored as a matter of revenue for the town. So I think that's sort of an inclusionary sort of process that you'd have to loop in with.
Yeah.
Our next steps and what staff has already started to work on, whatever. So I'm not sure we could really answer that at this time. I guess that's my thought, unless Jeff has a vision.
Oh, no. I mean, we just want to leverage as much technology as we possibly can. And I don't know what the right answer is right now. But I think digital, you know, apps, if they work, and the credit card app I've used, that works. So whatever works that doesn't cost us too much money. We know we have to make an investment, we know that, but we know also recruit it.
A follow-up question related to the parking. Currently, the valet concession that's been operating there has been using golf carts as a so-called, you know, mini shuttle, delivering people to and from. And a good friend of mine got a ride all the way down to the fish pier from them last year. So is that sort of what you would, do you see the valet sort of being part and parcel of that contract with the valet operator? Or do you see that as a town-owned, larger bus that goes to beaches and other locations?
Great question, Kurt.
Yeah. You don't have to answer it.
Yes.
Yes to everything.
I espouse the latter, Kurt, but it certainly is evidence that it may work with the golf cart working so hard.
Right. You just can't get too many people on a golf cart.
No.
I don't think that the committee envisioned something as broadly focused as Jeff's idea, at least not initially. I think, and the reason the shuttle people, the valet people, you know, brought that shuttle in on their own. I don't know if that was in the RFP. And they expanded their volunteerism to escort people to wherever they wanted to go this, these past couple of summers, just as a courtesy.
Jeff?
Yeah, sorry, Shereen, it's prolonged this. But I mean, in the larger scheme with a larger shuttle circuit, if you will, that would certainly be a stop. So if that were the vision, that may, you know, impact what the vision of this might or might not be. But that's not going to happen before this is finalized, I don't think. But that would certainly be a stop, the future, even, you know.
That's helpful.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the board to Kurt? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And we'll look forward to the next step here. And I look forward to our discussion on Saturday. So you may get more feedback from us through the staff after our meeting on Saturday.
Look forward to that, too.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Have a good evening.
You, too. Okay. So I guess now we're at our final public comments on business agenda items, which was the budget and the Eldridge Garage property. If anybody would like to raise their hand and make a comment, they can do so now. Okay, I see EG again. Elaine?
Yes, I just had a comment on the Eldridge Garage. And I will admit, I haven't been following it too closely. But we paid a lot of money for that property. And my understanding was, you know, we wanted to preserve, the garage is kind of the centerpiece. And so I would be opposed to, you know, knocking that down, obviously, and putting up a bigger structure. And I guess I'm surprised that, you know, most of the square footage are bathrooms. I think that's sort of unfortunate when you're trying to preserve a building and then you make them into bathrooms. We've got a lot of bathrooms around town. And I had sort of envisioned it, and again, I wasn't involved, so it may have come up. But more as a little visitor's center, a place to have picnic tables in the front, people to sit with grassy areas. And they're not going to do that around a bathroom, or a lot of them. So I would hope that you do preserve the building, keep the original structure, and maybe consider it being something where people would like to go in and get out of the rain and hang out and look at pictures, maybe, old pictures, and maybe a tiny museum or something. But I just think to have bathrooms everywhere we go is just too much. As I said, I think we spent two or three million, right, for the property? And to have it for tourists again, when I think it would be something that the residents would like to enjoy as well and not just bathrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, we don't have any. Any final thoughts from the board? Anything?
Good meeting.
No, it was a good meeting. Appreciated the budget discussion. It was great. Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A salute, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second? Okay. The second, I'll take a roll call. Board member Castro, since you're on the phone.
Aye.
Board member Dykens?
Yes, aye.
Board member Metters?
Aye.
Board member Kokolas?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jill and the staff for their preparation and presentations this evening. And we will see each and every one of you on Saturday for our workshop. Okay? Thank you very much. Have a good evening, Chatham. Good night.